Good evening. Thank you very much for coming to the Oyster River School Board Meeting on June 12th, 2024. We are going to begin this evening's meeting with Public Comment section. Just like last time, everybody will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the town that you live in, and then go ahead and begin to speak. We will start with Blake Janelle from Jenkins Road.
Hi, everybody. Blake Janelle.
That's pretty flexible, too, if you want.
Blake Janelle. I live in Madbury, and I've been a resident of Madbury for 35 years, my whole life. I was born and raised in this community. I was a student here at Moheramit, and I couldn't be happier to still call this district my home. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the 17 families who were redistricted and our children moving to Massway. It saddens me to say that most of those families are not comfortable speaking here tonight. Unfortunately, this issue has become a very public debate across various forums, and so regardless of your decision here tonight, we want to ensure that we remain the strong unified community that is Oyster River. We hope that the school board has diligently considered the many letters, emails, the 157 petition signatures, and the wishes of Principal Goldsmith and Dr. Morse. We hope that you can come to a solution that does not impact our children in an unbalanced way, that allows them to maximize the time that they can spend with their family and friends, and that does not compromise the academic excellence that we've come to expect from both of our schools. Thank you for hearing us, for spending the extra time in meetings like this, and for advocating for what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tori Bullock.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Tori Bullock, and I live in Madbury. My two daughters currently attend Moheramit, and I'm here tonight to express my support of the original board decision to assign a group of incoming kindergarteners to Massway as authorized by the school board policy titled "Student District Placement." The original school board decision is the least disruptive and impactful of all the options that have been discussed. No encore space will be given up, no classroom will be housed in an alternative space, no classrooms will be segregated from the wings, and all students will receive the wonderful, robust curriculum and experiences that our district is known for. I do not support suspending school board policies that protect the quality of education our children receive. You might hear from some families tonight whose children were unexpectedly enrolled at Massway and have demanded your original decision be reconsidered. I feel for their disappointment, but this is not a new process, and we do not have school choice in this district. Many Oyster River families before now have had their children enrolled at an elementary school they didn't expect, and that was different than their neighbors. What a great opportunity those kids were given to expand their social circles. I currently work as a special ed case manager in the local school district. School is difficult for so many children, especially those that struggle or don't connect with the academic curriculum. Some children only feel successful in their encore spaces. It's their favorite time of the school day. I do not agree with or support further overcrowding by taking these physical spaces away from the entire student body at Moheramit. Those kids really love and need those spaces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to mispronounce this name. I apologize. Eli Wines? Was that where you're on?
Wyans.
Wyans, I apologize.
My name is Eli Wyans. I live in Durham. My siblings and I went to Moheramit. We're all in high school now, but during our time at Moheramit, the art room was moved to the middle of a wing to make room for another classroom. What we remember about art is Mrs. Carter. We remember the projects we did. We remember the model magic, for whatever reason. What we cannot remember or agree on is which grade we were in when the art removed. In my house, we were lucky enough to have an art room. It stocked with every art supply it could ever want. Much to my mother's delight, we did most of our art anywhere but the art room. Where you do art doesn't matter. What matters is the art itself. What also matters is a familiar face on your first few days at a new school. It was important freshman year. It was important in fifth grade, and it was definitely important on our first day of elementary school. Another thing you should know is my parents decided to have two more kids when I was in middle school. So I have a sister who was starting kindergarten at Moheramit this fall, and we don't care where she does art. What we would absolutely care if she had to watch all the kids in our neighborhood get off the bus at one school right before being driven to a completely different school where she didn't know anyone. Dr. Morse and Mr. Goldsmith have a plan, and this isn't their first rodeo. Please trust them, and please don't sacrifice the emotional well-being of 17 kids for the perceived luxury of an art room.
Thank you very much. Mike Vardaro. Hope I didn't kill that one, too.
Mike Vardaro, Lee, New Hampshire. So my six-year-old daughter is about to finish kindergarten at Moheramit Elementary School. We moved to Lee seven years ago, well before we were ready to participate and benefit from ORCSD, in large part because of the reputation of the school district. I've been so impressed with the quality of the staff, the curriculum, and the variety of extracurricular activities provided at Moheramit over the past year. It's been beautiful to watch my daughter thrive in the Mo environment. The families before you deserve the same. I'm confused and concerned with the school board's decision to send students living in Madbury to Massway. The elementary school your child attends is the heart of your community. This decision would make these children and families of Madbury into spectators in their own neighborhood. The school district has nothing to gain from denying enrollment at Moheramit to these families, but there's a lot to lose. Many of these families have made tremendous sacrifices to send their children to a school that makes sense for them geographically and aligns with their values. You're risking leaving these families feeling ostracized and defeated. This is not a legacy we want for our school district. So I urge the school board, please use your power to do right by these families, and follow the recommendations of Principal Goldsmith and Dr. Morse. Please vote to accommodate these students at Moheramit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lauren Robertson.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Robertson from Madbury. I'm a mom of four, a rising fourth grader, a rising second grader, an incoming kindergartner, and a soon-to-be preschooler. I spoke last week, but after digesting many of the comments made last week, as well as talking with other district parents at school pickups, I maintain that Moheramit should not be forced to lose an encore space when there is an open classroom at Massway. I've read the comments on the community Facebook post about this issue. On that post thread, what struck out to me was the number of people who stated their son or daughter did not end up at their expected school and yet had a wonderful experience they wouldn't change. It confirms that our existing placement policy works. There was not a single negative comment from someone who experienced these placement changes in the past. I can't help but feel this is not so much an educational issue, but an emotional one, on both sides, perhaps. I completely understand the disappointment these families must have felt after learning their child would not be attending the expected school, but expectations change. At a certain point, this argument becomes not about expectation, but instead about preference. I just can't comprehend telling my older two girls that next year an encore space they love has to go away because of parental placement preference. I also think from the perspective of a united district, what message does changing the existing policy send if it is based on preference? Are we telling our kids that Moheramit is somehow superior because we both know, or we all know, they're great schools? If Massway has classroom space for all UA programs and an additional classroom, how can the two schools be considered equal? This is not to say that I don't have complete confidence in David Goldsmith and the teachers at Moheramit. If the board votes to send these extra kindergarteners to Moheramit and remove an encore space, I'm certain every teacher and staff member will step up and deliver fantastic teaching experiences, as they always do. They just simply shouldn't have to when there's a turnkey solution available this year at Massway. Ultimately, if the kindergarteners end up attending Massway following the existing district policy, they will end up being okay. If our kids have to lose an encore space, they will end up being okay. It will be less than what the students at Massway have, perhaps. There's no getting around that. No matter that the curriculum will be the same and the teachers will do a great job, it will be a lesser experience for kids used to dedicated encore spaces as it currently exists at Moheramit. Again, it doesn't feel like an issue of education. Both of these schools are excellent and within the same district. It's an emotional issue. I, too, get emotional and upset and disappointed when things don't go as expected, but I'm certain that if the unexpected option for my child was still in my district and offered a quality of education and experiences, I wouldn't choose to have an entire school give up encore space to accommodate my personal preferences. One comment that really resonated with me about this whole situation was someone who mentioned that their child had the best of both worlds when they went to middle school. They had Moheramit friends from their neighborhood and Massway friends from school. I thought a lot about what was said last week about community. As a district, our community does include two elementary schools. Perhaps the parents or PTO groups should work on organizing multiple events a year that combine the two schools so we can build a more united district with connections that do begin at the elementary level. Thank you all, and for the families who are likely disappointed by my comments tonight, please know I'm simply advocating for my kids and their classmates' overall elementary experience, the same way you are for yours. I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you over the years. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Jody Walker.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm talking to you today with a rising seventh grader of Jody Walker, Madbury. I'm here to speak with you about a rising seventh grader, a rising eleventh grader, a rising twelfth grader, and a junior in college. And I want to share with you a little history and then share with you where I am today. 11 years ago, Dr. Morse, we had a similar conversation, and I spoke at a school board meeting. And that was because my pep student, who has an unusual learning disability, she's hearing impaired, was going into kindergarten, and we had a space issue. And we at pep had been working with my daughter, who had some really distinct needs back then, to prepare her so that her community, which was going to be Moheramit, we'd bring her to playtime here, integrating with her peers, so that she'd have the easiest transition. She was nonverbal at the time. And then, all of a sudden, we were going to move her to Massway because we had a space issue. We had the modulars, but we were crowded at the school. I also had, at that time, my son was going to be in first, my oldest was going to be in fourth. It felt like a huge disruption for our family. I know that some of the people that had other kindergarteners come in didn't even know this was going on because it didn't impact them. My rising kindergartner, it was going to impact her, so I paid attention. And I share that because we met back then, it was, I think, at the beginning of your tenure, Dr. Morse, and you were really like, "Oh, Massway is great." And I had to stand up and say, "This does not work for my family." I was panicked for my daughter, all the preparedness we had done. And I'm grateful to say that the decision was made. Moheramit adjusted. We found the space. I think it was the art room. My son and my other daughter didn't have any impact from their access to art. Art's a huge part of my family. My husband's a professional musician, so we didn't want those services to be lost. And then, when my kindergartner came in, all of the special services she was going to receive, I was told, "Oh, they might be limited or stretched too thin." That didn't happen. Everything was beautiful. The staff here are outstanding. They really adjusted well with the influx of the students. My daughter got everything she needed, and by the time she was in second grade, she was starting to get vocabulary. And so, everything went great back then. It was easy. It didn't seem like it was going to be, but it was okay. And I want to bring you fast forward to now. That rising junior, well-adjusted, has some key friends still from pep that transitioned here with her, and we didn't put her in her pep program with Massway because we knew she had challenges. There was a lot of strategy for her. She's now going to be in eleventh grade. She still gets services. That's why we're in this district, for her, and it's been amazing. She has great community, and I am grateful to say that she's, you know, looking at colleges. She has that as an option for her. And I really want everyone to be aware that I can't tell you what it would have been differently, and I'm glad I can't. I know that the community base that we set up for her, the preparedness we had to bring her to Moheramit worked. She's well-adjusted, and all of my other kids are well-adjusted. So I would hope that we can keep what we did in the past, Dr. Morse, and keep students where they belong.
Thank you. Alexander Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Taylor. I'm a resident of Lee. I have a daughter. She's turning two next month, so this isn't a decision that affects me today, but it will in a couple of years. When I bought my house in Lee, what, six years ago now, I didn't know what school it was going to be in district-wise. It didn't really matter to me. There could be exceptional education, no matter what school my kids went to. I did grow up in Durham, and I went through this school, K-4, or K-4, rather. My brother, who's younger than me, had his kindergarten at Massway and then went through four here at Moheramit. We had excellent experiences both ways. In terms of the immediate need, we really need more space to have equity between the schools. There are four more classrooms at Massway than there are here, so if we added four classrooms here, that would give equity. The next thing is we should consider the two pep rooms under the high school. The high school is busting at the seams. They need those two classrooms back. So we added six classrooms here, moved pep here, then we would give everyone the space they need, and construction keeps getting more and more expensive every year. So I really think that what makes sense is to have the very capable staff here figure out how to move an encore for a year or two, and then, as the construction project goes forward, get together, see if we can get a vote this March, maybe, and have it in the next couple of years. So that's my view, looking a couple of years ahead. So, thank you.
Alex, not to mix your roles, but I'm getting concerns from the community that they're not able to hear clearly.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. We will have time. What's happening? Oh. I'm sorry, Stella. You could have just come right up. We will have another time at the end for public comment. Okay, we have one item on the agenda today, and it is obviously this discussion. And so, Dr. Morse, if you would like to reframe the discussion, that would be great.
Just, we don't normally respond individually to public comment, but Jody's comments actually reminded me of where we were 11 years ago. And the history of this is not an immediate issue. It's been an issue that the district has struggled with for over a decade. When I came in as superintendent, there were 418 children in this building. 418. So think about 300 feeling full. What's the difference in a decade? Programming differences. We've added tutors to the program to make sure that children who are not identified as special ed get assistance so they can be successful. We've added, as of the fall, we've added a new special needs program to this building because the number of children who needed services has literally doubled from last year. So when we did this project in this building, it extended the gymnasium. I asked the board at the time if we could build two classrooms right off this room. And the board, you know, did their due diligence. The one thing I would say about the board, so you all know this, is they never make decisions fast. They're very process-oriented, and they're very thoughtful. That continues to this day. But the board at that time decided not to build those two classrooms. Had they built those two classrooms 11 years ago, it was about $500,000, about $250,000 a classroom. It's not, part of the issue that this board is facing is the cumulative effect of tight spaces, increased demand on programming, and then ultimately, you know, as Alex alluded to, potential for a building project. We now know that that building project is going to be a million dollars a classroom. Million, from $250,000 to a million. I share that because construction costs are only going to go up. And wherever the board is on this issue tonight, one of the things that I want to plant the seed with all of you on is, I won't be here, but you will. And if a construction project is put out there, that is to equalize the classroom space between the two schools so that you won't face this issue in the future. So the board is going to need a lot of support to rectify this in the long term. In the short term, as I talked about last time, there are two issues. It's the immediate issue, and then there's the long-term issue. But I was asked by David to take a different approach tonight, and he asked me to talk about this as a district issue. So, you know, as we're sitting here tonight, it all feels very heavily slanted toward Moheramit, and it really is an elementary issue. We have needs at both buildings that need to be addressed. And so, this particular issue was a decision that, you know, quite frankly, administration put on the table because we had no other options at that point. We knew we had classroom space at Massway, and we didn't have it here. But once the decision was made and we received the feedback from all of you, you know, that pushed us in the direction of trying to figure out different solutions. One of the other things I want to share with all of you as parents is the reputation of this school board is to do exactly what it's doing for the last month with all of you. It's to listen. It's to read. It's to hear. It's to consume where the community is and try to do always what's best for children. So we hear the different presentations, and of course, you know, it can be, the presentations can go either way. You know, it's advantage, it's disadvantage. And one of the things I also wanted to say tonight is how much I respect the positions of everybody, including the board, where we are on this. You're amazing. It's an amazing community. You know, I think that the student, you know, really articulated his experience and his family's experience. It's what makes Oyster River a special place. So where we are tonight is trying to figure out a very short-term solution to a district-wide problem. And so, wherever the board is tonight, it's not the solution. It's a pathway toward a solution. So as they do their work and deliberate and try to decide which direction they're going to go, I just want you to know how much I respect all of you and this school board for its commitment to hearing and trying to understand and trying to always do what's best for children. So having said that, where we are. The board at the last meeting did not take a vote, but very clearly said they were not interested in bringing a portable back to this building for a lot of good reasons. One is the safety of your children. So when we pulled the modular out, it had been sitting there for roughly 20 years, and it was supposed to be a temporary solution long before I arrived. And by the time I got here, it was like every year, I was told, "Get that modular out of here. Get that modular out of here." And we watched the population of this school drop from 418 kids to the 300 students that are here today. However, that was not by accident. We redistricted a whole neighborhood down in Durham that used to come here over to Lee in order to try to rebalance the school populations. You have to have space to do that. And so, at that point in time, Massway still had four more classrooms in this building, and it was a relatively rough, traumatic decision by the board to redistrict that neighborhood, just as it is for you guys tonight. So in planting that, the board has said, not through vote, but through discussion, modulars off the table. It really leaves the board two decisions tonight in the short term and a couple of decisions in the long term. So the board has the choice tonight to stay the course, or the board has the choice to put one of the encores out into the wing. David and I have made a recommendation, but we're not the decision-makers, and the board is. And so, we're at this point where the board is really in this last throes of trying to make a decision that's best from the school district's perspective and from the parent's perspective. So with that, Matt, I would turn it over to you and let you take it from here.
Okay. When we left off last week, previously on, we took a vote, and the motion failed because it was a tie, and a tie is a fail. But then we tabled the discussion. So I would like to pick that discussion back up. And Kelly, I do not want to put you on the spot, but you were not at the meeting, and if you have thoughts that you'd like to start us off with, are you comfortable with that?
That sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate that. So I think for me, I want to share how appreciative I am of all of the comments that have come through, both through folks that have shared, you know, personal stories, stories of, you know, situations that weren't always ideal, but they made the best of it. And there's, you know, opinions and strong feelings on both sides. I really, you know, am grateful for everybody's ability to share that with us. I think overall, you know, our kids are resilient, and whichever way that we ultimately go, that the Massway and Moheramit will be wonderful, thriving, excellent places. It's very much, you know, what Dr. Morse echoed. I certainly have opinions regarding the most vulnerable population of students, particularly students with disabilities, and making sure that services are equitable across both schools. With some of the new data that came to light about where challenges will overtax one particular school over another, that, to me, is something that really weighs heavily and makes me consider what my particular choice is at this point in time. That wouldn't have been information that we had last week. It was something that came out just recently, so, you know, I don't know what I would have voted last week, but...
Just so everybody on the board and the public is aware, the question was asked over the course of the last week, what the impact would be on special services. And for me, because I asked the question, was more directed towards the MTSS2, the kids that don't have IEDPs but that do need intervention. And Kathryn Flore sent an email stating that the additional 17 kids at Massway would likely stress the Massway services in the special ed services and in the MTSS2.
I just want to echo what Kelly said about, thank you for everyone who took the time to write to us, to speak here tonight. Take time out of your very busy schedules, and I appreciate, you know, how important an issue this is for everyone. And the other question that I asked was, I was curious about the younger siblings of these affected kindergarteners. And we did learn of quite a few younger siblings, and particularly a cohort two years out, that are currently aged three. And what that said to me was that, you know, it's not just moving this one group of kindergarteners over to Massway. If we made that choice, that this was going to have an impact on future years. And two years out, we would be faced potentially with Massway being overcrowded, even if we did decide to build an addition here at Moheramit. It's like, okay, but now we've moved all these families over here, and we have all these kids that are now coming into kindergarten. And I just, you know, and last week, I also stated, I just don't see moving those children over to Massway as being the best decision for the long term. I certainly appreciate losing an encore, absolutely. My son, Mrs. Carter, she was an awesome art teacher. I honestly can't remember if he ever was in a room or out of a room. I just know she was an awesome art teacher. I appreciate that that will have an impact, but honestly, I don't see moving that group to Massway as being the best for the district in the long term because of the ramifications over the future years.
Go ahead, Brian.
All good points. I'm not going to restate what I said last week, but I'd like to restate my motion.
It would be making a new motion, but you could do that.
Make a new motion, but repeating it, I guess. I'd like to keep these kids at Moheramit School, Moheramit Elementary. I'd like to keep these kids at Mohairamet School, Mohairamet Elementary and to put an encore into an open space, but that decision to be made by administration of when and where, who and where, I should say, for the next school year.
Can you just state that in one motion for Wendy?
I motion to keep the kids, the redistricted kids, the selected redistricted kids at Mohairamet, move an encore space to free up a classroom and how and who that is will be at the discretion of administration.
Can I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
From Renee. All right. Do we have discussion on that motion? Go ahead Gianna.
I don't particularly want to have that vote at that time. I think there's a bunch of things we actually need to discuss before having that, frankly.
But that can happen during the motion discussion.
Yeah. So, is it okay to speak at this time?
Absolutely.
One of the things is what Denise was bringing up is that if we shift over kids to Masway right, then two years from now, you're going to have the overcrowding situation at Masway. Well, unfortunately, the converse is also true. If you leave in that Mohairamet, then you have overcrowding at Mohairamet in two years as well, where in two years, both encores will be out into the way. So, we have an overcrowding issue kind of no matter what. It's just a question of which school it will be. One thing that I keep on going back to is the cohort progression about where the kids will be distributed. And I'm not trying to single out anybody and things like that, but it's a real concern about how many kids we have coming in with the birth rate data and the projections and the, this kindergarten side has kind of surprised us, but we now look to the projections for the next one and it's larger and then the next year is even larger and then it's still high for the next one and then it goes down. So, the thing is, is that we still have three incoming large kindergarten classes. Now, we could talk about the expansion that, yeah, Alexander came up, but that's not something we're trying to solve right now. We're trying to solve it for the next year. But my concern is that it's not just the next year, it's the year after that too. Even if we absolutely bust it and make sure that we get an expansion and I hope that we could, that's two years that we're dealing with some overcrowding. So, I want to be careful about how we're discussing this, to think about that, to make sure we are thinking, it's like a short term, a medium term and a long term because it's not just for this year. My fear actually is, is that we can't predict right now where that next incoming class of kindergarteners will be. We have the data of like how many there are, but where they live or where they're going to put them, we don't know. We'd like to think it's going to be lovely and equal, but I, that's not an assumption I'd be willing to make. So, I'm worried about sitting here next year in the same situation. And it's something that no matter what we end up choosing to do, I think we are going to be at that point, depending on what we do. And actually, if they, if we move the kids over to Masway, we actually have a little bit more wiggle room. That being said, the special education thing was something that absolutely concerned me because that was something I discussed with Catherine actually after the meeting and then Matt asked it formally and to me that is a big one because that's information that we simply didn't have. I'm saying some of this just so people in the room can hear that this is actually not, as Dr. Morse was saying, it is a district-wide problem and it's not trying to go after Mohairamet or Masway or saying one is better than the other or going after particular people, but it's actually trying to figure out how we can balance the incoming folks. With that being said, I actually would like to give this over to Heather and put her on the spot. I hate to do this to you, but she wrote down a bunch of things that were, she's faster at writing than I am by a lot, so, but a lot of the things she came up with that I was saying for me and I'd love if she was able to discuss them. And yeah, and I think we're going to need to come her from, from Kelly, to see if some of these things will address some of the things that I'm bringing up and answer questions to people's satisfaction in the audience.
All right. So, I'm a planner. I am super detail-oriented and I really want to be able to bound the uncertainty of the decision as we move it into the long term. And that's hard because there is a lot of uncertainty. And so, I spent gobs of time looking at numbers and trying to figure out where the break points are for class sizes and how that propagates through the system. I've estimated kindergarten enrollments for the next five years, six different ways, just to see what the range of those numbers look like and bounding that uncertainty and trying to put this all together into something that would potentially be workable with the caveat that it could all be garbage because move-ins are unpredictable and breakdown. We have a historic range. We know it typically hangs out 50/50, but if Gianna, like what Gianna says, if it swings too hard one way, we're going to be in a world of hurt. So, the, one of the, so we've got the sped thing that came in that was important, but one of the other things I did is I looked at year two. So, I'm going to call next year, year one. This is the one we're discussing the placements for. Year two, when we look at the two classes and we look at this year's current second graders, next year's rising third graders, the Mohairamet kiddos that are currently spread over four classes, within policy can be collapsed down to three classrooms in their fourth grade year. That opens up one room that we weren't anticipating. Gives us some wiggle room because there are about seven kids that can move into the district and we can still get it down in policy to three. So, there's some reasonable comfort with that, but that's two years of planning. So, again, predicting, one of the high school seniors at graduation said something about the folly of predicting the future and I took that one to heart. And one of my other favorite grad school quotes, friends, don't let friends extrapolate. Come on data nerds, I know you're out there. So, with that, year two goes from being two encores displaced to one. If kindergarten, based on the birth rate data, rolls out about the same, that would be four kindergartens at Mohairamet and it would be status quo for two years in a row. We wouldn't have to lose the second encore. If it breaks a little lower because we've got more move-ins in this year than not, then maybe that goes down to three and art can go back. And that's like, crash fingers folks, I'd love that to happen. And that, that sort of takes care of year two in terms of where people are. And then year three, as Gianna said, is, is our stickiest year. We have somewhere between 118 and 151 total kindergarteners, depending on which way I break that number for that year. This year, for reference, we have 133. 151 breaks us into nine kindergartens. Everybody's losing encores at that point. If it's on the lower end, then, you know, it's, it's four per school. Masway handles that without losing an encore, Mohairamet loses too. And so, as Denise said, with the sibling data, when we sort of ran these numbers initially, the thought was that within the 17 families that we're displacing, we knew you all, or a good chunk of you all had younger siblings. We figured it would sort of bleed out over the one to five-year timeframe. All y'all have three-year-olds. Seriously. Something in the water that year. There are 12 three-year-olds.
Something in the air, I actually believe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was, I was going for the trauma response.
I apologize.
Just going to go for the humor. Right? So, there are 12 and maybe more because not everyone responded kiddos that are three or in that three-year bound, plus or minus. I don't have exact birth months, so a couple of you may be one side or the other, but let's just say 12, that would then start kindergarten during that high spot. And on sort of the level of uncertainty, we're going to try to get the addition going based on where I think the process is going to work. That's not going to go online in time. So, we've got to deal with the bubble. We've located you guys over at Masway, your siblings are at Masway, we've now spiked Masway and Mohairamet's looking great and this is what Gianna was referring to because in one scenario, keeping you here spikes Mohairamet and the other scenario where we send you and your 12 siblings over it spikes Masway and neither one is great. So, we're going to need to do some work in year three, right? That could be if the bond fails and we'll know that in March of that year for a elementary school improvements package, then at the same time, we're sort of talking about that bond, I think we should have redistricting in our pocket because we're going to need to do something. And that's going to be disruptive. And it's not something I'm looking forward to. But if it fails or even if it doesn't fail and we now have six new classrooms at Mohairamet, we're going to need to rebalance. We just moved you all over to Masway, now I need to move your siblings back over to Mohairamet and that's just a disaster. It's a nightmare. It's a nightmare for everybody. So, the data you provided was really useful, so thank you all for responding to that. The capacity of special ed is important. As we work through trying to sell the expansion or the improvements package and the idea, my idea at the moment and several share of this idea, it would be both elementary schools need things and we would bond both elementary schools as a global package. We're going to need folks to go out in the community and to talk about it and talk about why it's important and to get that 60% of the vote. It was a lot of work. I will tell you that when we were doing the superintendent interview process, people came here for the interview and were like, "You guys got your middle school passed on your first go-round." That never happens. One fellow who has a district that wasn't too dissimilar to ours, has been trying to get improvements for his elementary school done for six years to bond it. Right? This isn't assured. We're going to have to go out and sell it and so, please help us do that when the time comes. All right. I'm trying to think if there's anything else on the list. Yeah, I think that was it. Did I miss anything?
Nope. That was good, thank you.
Let's stop talking now.
Go ahead Kelly.
Can I just, one, one thing, I, I was, I feel fortunate to have had to have been out of state last week because I think we've, we've gotten a lot more information over the last, the last week. That's not to say the last month and a half, we haven't had, you know, data collection. It's been amazing and I want to say thank you to Matt and Heather, Dr. Morse and the rest of the leadership team on the more than a full-time position you're putting into this on top of your regular position. What you were putting together to present for us to, to consider is above and beyond expectation. It's really super helpful for all of us. Thank you.
Stella?
I'd like to add one.
Please.
Basically, what I want to say would just build upon what everybody has been saying for the last few meetings and especially touching on what Mr. Goldsmith has been saying. From being here, the main thing that I observed is for a short-term decision, we need a long-term solution or at least an understanding of how we could reach one. And that's really the tricky part because either solution poses a conflict within the next one or two years. And so, my main opinion is that no child's education or access to an education should be compromised, as I imagine everyone in this room does agree with. As I could personally not get behind putting a modular in in regards to student safety, I also could not get behind any child with special needs falling between the cracks as a result of locating several students from Masway to Mohairamet. I was not aware of this issue at last week's meeting, but I think a plan in which that taking place is a possibility is absolutely unacceptable. So, what I mainly think is that we need to keep, we need to continue talking about and considering these long-term solutions because both plans pose benefits, they pose drawbacks, but we need, we need a concrete understanding of what, of the next step that we can take, right? We're talking about, okay, public, how are we going to get people behind in addition to Mohairamet? Is that actually what we want to consider as we'll take the short-term solution, whatever we decide, and then we can tell people, this is what to look forward to in the next few years? What we mainly need to tell people is this is what we're going, this is not just the short-term solution, not just the long-term solution, but this is our plan. This is what we're going to do with these students in the next few years. That's, that's mainly what I think we need to be able to promise the public is, no matter what we're actually getting out of the next year, the year after that, this is what we're going to be able to do or to try to do in the long run. That's just a hard thing to do.
Thank you. Okay. For me, I will say that two things have changed since last week. One is during the last week's discussion, we were under the understanding that this procedure of moving students from their home school to another school is a policy and a procedure that we've been following, but this is going to come in the form of a question. If I'm reading correctly, over the last six years or seven even, that has not happened at all and that the only children that are at an opposite school are for services, referral or by request.
I think that's an accurate representation, Matt. We've never arbitrarily moved children in this mass to another school. Every decision that we've made, and we do have a couple of children from Masway here and probably about six or so from here over there, related to services. So, it's related to the needs of the children. One of the reasons why we are creating a new special needs program in this building was that the capacity of the Masway school is full. That program is full. That program has Lee and Edvery and Durham children in it. But that, the student population has literally doubled and we can't overload that program, so we needed to create a second program at Mohairamet. So, the reason that you're having special needs children currently go to Masway was because that is the only location that we had in the district that service could be provided. So, yes, largely what you're saying is accurate. This particular decision was, is based on, you know, just the overcrowding of a kindergarten and it wasn't based on special needs or other considerations. And when David and I talked through this issue, we initially thought that a child with no sibling in the building was an easier move than splitting up families. Obviously, you know, we also have been listening to the parents and we both adjusted our belief based on what we've heard from, from the parents. So, I really appreciate Kelly pointing out how much data we produced in a very short term. Literally, as we got data, I was feeding it to the school board and so that, on a daily basis. Normally, they get their packet and the data's all there and it's a nice pretty package with a bow on it. This particular issue, David, myself, Catherine, Amy, Dave, Todd, we've been producing data almost on a daily basis because we wanted the board to be able to make as informed a decision as possible. And the board, in its traditional sense, has asked really tough questions that forced us to do additional data work. Matt's question on, on special needs was particularly compelling. And so, the short-term issue question is, this is unique. We'd never done this before.
And that, so the second one for me is that services and I just think that to, what's the right word, to stress an already stressed position, so special ed teachers have a hard, hard job and to make that even harder, I'm not sure if that's a great idea. We'd be essentially telling the students without IEPs, we'd be overtaxing our tutors and if the tutors can't take the case, then the ones that are close to IEP but not quite, I think, will be pushed into referral for services. And this is going to be callous, but that's going to cost the district more money for a lot, you know, for more years. And if you're just looking at facts, more money generally is not great for a school. I think that it's very likely in the next two years, we're going to be in this exact same position of needing to move a cohort of kids from one school to the other. But waiting, in my opinion, buys us time to budget and to plan for those special services, to add tutors, to add special ed teachers. And I think, I think that that's a good idea. So, I would just ask if anyone has any last questions or... So I would just ask if anyone has any last questions or comments? Go ahead Heather.
So I have one more thing. There's the line at the very, very end. We are going to be taxing one encore teacher at this school pretty heavily for several years. And whichever way David goes with that, we need to treat her like a queen. Teacher Appreciation Week, there's got to be stuff coming in, like, bring it on, because she's going to be rolling with it for a long time.
And I would just add to that, like Heather said earlier, this is definitely a short-term solution, and like Gianna said, there is a middle solution, but an expansion at this school, and really, at both elementary schools, there's going to have to be, we'll have to put together, I think Heather used that, that's put together a...
General improvements package.
A general improvement package, that's a perfect way, yes.
A kind of university's living.
Yeah, to get both schools to where we can absorb these kinds of hits without that. So that said, I will ask for a vote, one more, I'm sorry, Gianna.
Just one, one comment. Heather mentioned this a little bit, and was talking about redistricting, what they call redistricting or rezoning between two schools. And I want everybody to put a pin on that one, because one of the things is that when the initial decision was made to try and move kids over to Mastway, you have to make, you have to decide what your criteria are on what are you going to use to, use to divide up kids in order to, who's going to be moving around, and that's how we're in a situation today. And one of the ones that was decided on was essentially the idea of grandfathering, that if you, your family started at one elementary school, that you would stay in that elementary school. And I'd like to put a pin in the idea that I think we are going to have to be redistricting, rezoning probably within the next couple of years to deal with this issue. I, I don't see it. I, I think we have some ideas, but I think it's probably going to happen, and I think that's actually an idea that might need to drop. Both schools are excellent. I personally moved elementary schools three times, because it was rezoned three times. I'm unkill. My husband had it happen as well. And I did a little bit of polling, a lot of other people did as well. And the great part about it is you are actually moving with the same, you know, same cohort. The real problem here is, is we're talking about dividing up kids that are within a neighborhood, but with that kind of redistricting, rezoning, you would be able to hopefully correct that problem, because that's ultimately what we're talking about, is that you're not going to deliberately chop up one street. You're going to, when you redistrict, you're going to have the whole street go. But I, just kind of saying that that's, it's going to happen. I don't want people to brace for it because we have those next couple of years coming, and it's, it's going to happen. And so we cannot guarantee that if you start at MoHaramet, you're going to stay there, or that if you're at Mastway, you're going to stay there, because it's, we have to have that flexibility in order to make this work for everyone in the best way. So I just want to leave that one there, just to propellate and sit in your brain for, for a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the motion on the table is to keep the 17 students at the MoHaramet Elementary School and grant the administration the authority to determine the best method for that. Okay? And the second was by Renee. All in favor of that motion? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. The motion passes. We will open up again for a public comment. And don't forget to state your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patrick Napier from Madbury. I wanted to take this time to thank the board, Mr. Goldsmith, Dr. Morse, and anyone else involved for the time and attention they gave to reconsidering this issue. I, along with the other affected parents, greatly appreciate this. During this process, I have realized the dedication you have to this district. I can't imagine the number of hours that each of you have committed to ensuring our children have a well-rounded and high-quality education. What you do is most definitely honorable. Personally, I'm planning on having children in this district until 2042, and looking forward to having a collaborative relationship with the board. We've heard differing views from various members of the community, including other parents. We all want what's best for the children, but as a community, we have different views of what that looks like. Now that this is over, I'm hopeful that we can move forward without animosity and all of the children can have a great school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a, a second? Brian, all in favor? Seven in favor of a journey. Are you in favor of a journey? Yes. Okay. Thank you.